In the past, the Federal Aviation Administration has always distributed our grant documents using paper. And those would be fed to us, we could take those around for their signatures. A year or so ago, they eliminated that option, and everything now is signed online. The problem is that we only get to update our distribution list once a year, and it takes several months without filtering its way to all the people that need it. In fact, our past chairman is still shown on our documents, so to avoid that problem in the future, we get a very short turn time on these documents. And I'm here to ask that for a resolution first and foremost, to allow those documents to be emailed to the office of the administrator. That'll give us a central location for those things to go. We would still, as I've always done, come and ask your permission for the administrator to execute those documents. And the third part of that resolution would be, I came to you in January to ask permission for the chairman to do that. I would just ask that to now read for the administrator to execute any documents for fiscal year 2025.
This is simply executing them via email, internet.
Permission of this commission, but just allowing the administrator to execute those documents when they come.
Thanks for that, Quipper.
Absolutely.
And we'll need a resolution tomorrow night as such, and you'll have that?
I submitted one.
I think he's gonna be on consent agenda tomorrow night, okay. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Cheryl Maddox, Chilton County Court System Services, retired, no more.
No, I'm back. I appreciate y'all allowing us to operate in this county and hope that you will.
Hang on one second, Cheryl. Make sure everybody appears got your phones on airplane mode. Tiffany's giving me a hands up, I'll say, interference, and everybody in here, please turn them on. Either turn them off, airplane mode or silence, please, thank you. Sorry, Cheryl, your five minutes can start now.
No, no, you're fine. For those of you who haven't seen me here before requesting a resolution to operate community corrections in the county, what it is, is the circuit judges order people who are nonviolent, who don't have any murder, attempted murder, rape, child, you know, anything like that, that they're just normal citizens that have a felony charge to be within our county. And we have at this time fifty-six that we're supervising, and we get paid. I gave y'all our copy of our contract from last year, because I don't think you've ever had one, just to give you an idea of what we get paid from the state to operate here. We're strictly operating under the Community Punishment and Corrections Act. It requires a lot of things of us, and they're listed under number seven, A through F. We have to pay for audits each year. Of course, in supervising them, we have to have them call in us, or we have leg bands available if necessary for somebody who's a runner. But otherwise, they're peaceful people. They're, you know, kin to all of us. You're gonna know some of them, I'm sure, but they're just peaceable people to be able to work and live within your community and within the boundaries of Chilton County. I don't know if you have any questions. So many of you I've seen in the past, and you're aware of it, but some of you are new. If you have any questions about what it is, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
And this is a no cost to the county, it's just a contract with the county.
They pay for their own drug screens each month, and then the state pays us fifteen dollars a day, up to the amount of one fifteen, and if it goes over that, we just have to absorb it. We don't get any more than that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
All right. Ms. Kara Stallman, our grant writers, how are you doing?
Good evening. So a couple of things. This is on the Chilton County CDVG Water Project, which is on County Road sixteen and on County Road twenty-six. We opened bids on May twenty-eighth, and the low bidder was for one eighteen, six sixty-five. The name of the contractor is called Gillespie Contracting. They're out of Jasper. And remember, this is the grant that's gonna hook from the water line that's been installed by the water authority. It's gonna hook from the water line to each household by a plumber, so it's gonna make those connections. So that's before you tonight is to award that bid, also to authorize the payment of an invoice, which is a grant-related invoice, hundred percent paid for out of grant funds, and to authorize any change, any other, and there's some, you know, assign the award document, and we've gotta move some money around, so there's money in one bucket for the water and has to move to the hookup bucket. It's not gonna cost y'all any money. We just have to physically move it through the grant amendment. Just authorize the chairman to sign those three things, so just happy to, that project. And then hopefully, as soon as y'all award, we'll have a pre-construction meeting. If any commissioners want to come to that, let me know. I'd be more than happy to invite you. And then there's a couple of people down there that's, wells have gone dry, so we're gonna make them the priority, and we're gonna tell the contractor to go out immediately and run their lines first, so those people have clean water as soon as possible.
And all this came in under the expected dollar.
All of this is under expected dollars. It was one eighteen, six sixty-five. And again, there's, we've had to shuffle some money around, but there's not gonna be any additional money on the county's part that's gonna go into this. And right now, I think we have about twenty-two people signed up, and the grant application had thirty-six. So hopefully, it may go up a little, there'll be some change orders, because hopefully, once people see it happening, they'll come out and fill out the paperwork. You can't force people to do this. This is a once-in-a-lifetime thing. They have to sign up now. They'll get, if they have the right income requirements, they'll get the water from the line to their house. But after this grant is over, they're on their own. They've gotta pay for it themselves. So this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, as long as you meet the right income requirements. But anyways, that'll be on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Very good. Any questions for anybody?
Not on that.
I know, I know. He's got another question that he's gonna ask me, I know, and I'm gonna jump into that. So on May second, we submitted the reimbursement request for the acquisition of the Manuka Park. We submitted that to EDECA, the full package. I have harassed them and called every week, multiple times, and asked them about it. And it's been two weeks, and they keep saying they're processing it. We haven't heard anything yet. But it's about, they owe us about a little shy of four hundred thousand dollars.
I called with two different messages. I haven't been, I haven't received a return call.
You haven't received a call back, okay. So we're pushing, but there's no update on that. We're also working on some other grants for the park, and then we're gonna pull all those together, and we'll get those submitted for the end of the month, as soon as we get the archery things. And then, yeah, working with Ken on some other stuff and the sheriff. Anyways, it's great to see y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Next on the list is Samantha Cost, summer internships. And she's a recent graduate of Montevala University, is that not correct?
University of Montevala.
Well, excuse me. Oh, you're in a lot too?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I will stand corrected.
It's the only thing I learned.
Hello, Commission. My name is Samantha Cost, and like was said, I'm from the northern end of Chilton County, and I'm a student who's been attending the University of Monteval for the past four years. Throughout my time at Monteval, one thing has been stressed to me over and over again, and that is the importance of trying to gain real-world experience before you graduate. The main way that this is usually done is through summer internships. Both me and my peers, the past couple of summers have searched very, very hard to find local internships. Although sadly, it seems that internships in south-central Alabama are quite hard to come by, and there are not many opportunities. This lack of opportunities means young and developing professionals from this area are missing out on crucial experience needed for when they join the workforce. Having no prior experience in your desired industry also makes finding a job very hard. Thus, I'm approaching the commission tonight to consider having a county internship program when it comes time to vote on the budget next year. Last summer, in this summer, Shelby County has begun to have their own county-run internship program. Shelby County last year had five interns, and as I just passed out, I've provided you with a copy of one of the positions they're hiring for this summer. While I'm not entirely sure all the details about each position, HR, GSI mapping, planning and development, civil engineering, tourism, and business. Shelby County Internship Program runs as a temporary position over ten weeks and does not include benefits. At the rate of fifteen dollars an hour, working only thirty hours a week for ten weeks, that comes to only cost four thousand five hundred. To me, this investment into young professionals in Chilton County is well worth it. It benefits the interns by giving them real-world experience and helps boost their resumes, and it also benefits Chilton County by helping accomplish projects that might not be getting pushed to the side due to lack of manpower or time, and having an interim program can also show how Chilton County is working to keep young professionals and talent in Chilton County, providing them with possible future employees. In conclusion, as the budget is being discussed for the upcoming fiscal year, I hope you consider the benefits of possibly having a county-wide internship program.
Thank you, Samantha. You said something in there that made a whole lot of sense, and I've preached this for years. No student ought to get a diploma from a college until they've worked six months, six weeks, whatever, in that field and proved they can do it. I think, I think it's something we really need to consider when we come budget time, is interns.
It also gives students the chance to see if this is an industry that they're getting their degree and they actually like working in.
Exactly, exactly.
Do you know how many people participated in this in Shelby County?
In Shelby County last year, I know they had five for sure. I'm unsure of how many they had this year, because I'm pretty sure last year was the first year they ever started it. So maybe they've expanded upon it since then. I'm unfamiliar.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it to us. Anybody else have a comment?
Since we're working on the budget, is there any way you can come back with a number of students that would like to get in this program?
I can work on that and come back next time.
That way we can kinda get some money in it if we all agree to it?
Well, it's no different than the previous lady that came when she's doing her dissertation for the healthcare. She's also asking, so it's all in the same area.
Okay, good.
You know, different ones are asking, so yeah, that's something that's beneficial and could be a potential employee.
Yes. That's another thing, is it can maybe give you guys some employees that know the system a little better when people come to retire and different things.
Sure can. All right. Any other comment? Well, thank you very much.
And are there any grants available, because we're not 501(c)(3), but educational? You can always look and see, if you don't mind.
I will. I'd be more than happy to look.
Because sometimes.
Sometimes, I know exactly where it is. But I think it's one of those things that you can invest a little bit of money in if you go a long way.
Both ways.
Okay, next is our sheriff, John Sheriff.
Let me think a little about this, so I don't mess it up, but this kinda goes, this kinda goes back, oh, we, I guess we received a grant through EDECA. It's like a gun violence-type grant, stop gun violence. We were awarded four VR goggles. So we sent out bids on that, and I guess now we're asking to award the bid to VR armed. Everything should be provided for y'all, that everything was scored and done the way it needed to be done. So I guess I'm asking for a resolution tonight to award that grant.
Was that the only bid that was sent in?
There was four, five bids. Three.
Do we need to accept the bids and then award, or is it saying?
It was a request for proposal.
Okay, all right.
So it's a little different. You got proposals, so it wasn't an open bid.
Okay. We're gonna make sure.
They reviewed it, they reviewed it, and they ranked them and scored points, and that was the one that was ranked the highest.
That's the reason she's so great at what she does, is because she knows all this stuff. And Ken falls along behind her.
I don't think you'll get any argument from anyone up here.
No, sir. Shouldn't, shouldn't, because she does a great job.
All right, we'll have under consent agenda tomorrow night. All right. Thank you, sir. Is that it?
That's it for me. Nothing else. May I be excused?
You can be excused.
I got a family gathering at the house. I'm late for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next is Heath Sexton, county engineer, road department.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me be here. All I have tonight is we received a application from PALS, from Mr. Robbie Frederick, who lives on County Road four sixty-two, and in this, he would like to adopt a mile, participate in the Adopt a Mile program for County Road thirty-two, eighty-nine, and four sixty-two. And so just requesting the commission's approval for this application.
Okay, we can put that under consent agenda unless someone has a reason not to for tomorrow night. Anybody got any questions? All right.
Without having anything else on the agenda, no other road issues, it'd be okay if I missed tomorrow's meeting?
Try them with me.
Hey, I got a question. There's a road sign in towards, I took a picture of it, County Road, Crownsville, before you get to Crownsville, before you get to the land called Church, Church Street Road. And that sign, they tell me, has been labeled wrong for years. It says Church Street Road and Chilton Church Street Road. And it is a county sign, oh hell.
Who's that? She didn't work?
You know, Oak Grove Baptist Church. That's Anna Marshall's house. I'm sorry, Anna Marshall.
Down fifteen, down Cameron?
I got it, I got it. It's Chilton County three oh eight. When you turn right, Perry Mountain, you turn right, and then the next one down is Oak Grove Baptist Church on the right. Perry Mountain, turn for Perry Mountain. No, it's Chilton, it's Chilton, it's our area.
It's got a, it's got a road.
Chilton County three oh eight, Chilton County.
No, I'm saying, is that, is that three oh eight and this road the same road?
No, yeah, yeah, three oh eight is the road, yes. And it has a street name on it.
But we don't, we don't keep up street names.
We'll do those signs, okay, because I was not certain. So that'll be a.
That's not our sign.
That's not one of our signs.
That's a, okay, we'll see what they got.
It's a green sign, so that's not one of our street marks.
I looked at the nine-one-one address, and it just says County Road.
Yeah.
It never had street on it. Okay, so, okay, I'll let them know.
All those names were taken off when we went County, County Road numbers.
County Road numbers.
Yeah, I still have trouble with, I refer to someone by the name.
Yeah, that's going, you know, you know where.
Just get it with me after me, we'll figure it out.
Okay, it's right past that Oak Grove Church. I think it goes back up Perry Mountain, I think. Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, because they ask.
I have something, Heath.
Yes, sir.
She rang my bell. At the end of County Road seventy-nine, coming out of Toga County, there's a stop sign right there. The bottom's curved, it's come out of the bottom of that stop sign, and when the wind blows.
We paid extra for that.
Yeah, just on a swivel.
We'll correct it tomorrow, for sure.
That's got a generator on the other end.
You noticed it, didn't you? Yeah, I saw it, I saw it back.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's red energy, not green energy. Okay, now it's down to Commissioners, Butch Billingsley.
Yes, sir. As some of you know, that we sent out an RFP for soliciting for an ambulance company to come into this county and maybe do an agreement with us for ambulance services for this county. The timeframe is up as of today. Was it five o'clock? And I'm gonna make one correction, and not a correction, but a statement. Next time, if I do it, y'all remind me that whenever it's due on a certain day, put it due about three o'clock in the afternoon, not five o'clock, because the courthouse closes at four o'clock. So, yeah, that was brought to my attention today, which it should have been. But anyways, without any further ado on there, we are, we did not receive what we were really wanting to on it. So I'll be asking tomorrow night to point a resolution, to point Chairman Williams to contact an ambulance service that's certified in this county to see if we can negotiate with them for supplying ambulances in this county that are to service this county. So I'll be making that motion tomorrow night, since we have done, went through all the formalities of what we thought was corrected on trying to get the service here. And I will help y'all write that tomorrow. I'll come in a little bit early and we'll write it. Right, okay, so we're there. I think we have a couple of companies that have shown some interest after we found out today that nothing has, actually was coming in from there, so that's what I'll be asking for.
Okay, I might clarify something there. A court case in Mobile some time back says that you do not have to bid ambulance service. You can contract, negotiate and contract with an ambulance service to provide, and excuse me, but I don't remember the term the judge used, but there's a term, and you can just negotiate with them and agree on an amount. So we're gonna proceed that way then, if we get the resolution tomorrow night. Okay, any?
Tell them before you go, since we're in the emergency, also the tornado warning sirens, are we responsible for those in the county? Who is? None of them work.
They, they, they're not.
They all went to this.
The past commissioners voted to do away with them, because it was costing so much for them to keep the upgrade on them, and they were controlled through the EMA. So I was at that meeting when that was taking place. Might have been two commissioners seeing before.
It was.
Okay, so none of them, they're non-functional.
Okay.
One of the reasons besides, besides the fact that the upkeep on them was the fact that they only activated them when the National Weather Service made the call. And from what I understood, National Weather Service made the call usually about ten minutes after the storm had passed.
Correct, yeah.
So that was one of the biggest reasons they did it in conjunction with the upkeep on them.
Okay, I did not know it. Thank you.
Anything else?
So, Commissioner Billingsley, what's your, what's your, do you have an opinion on why no RFPs were answered?
Not really. There's been some confusion in the RFP, as I found out as of today. And then, of course, whether that matters of them sending one in or not, I do not know. And no one in any ambulance service that I'm aware of knows of what I just made the motion for, or not to make, going to make the motion tomorrow night for, to negotiate with them. There's, one side says this, one side says that, and one side said that. So just to keep it clean, we just say the time period, we put it out there. It was posted here at the courthouse, correct? Yeah, it's been posted, it's been posted on our website, so they could have seen it if they wanted to, so.
I don't think you're gonna get any, because they think you're gonna pay them to start doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you mean? What do you mean?
They're gonna want us to pay them to come in and do ambulance service.
Oh, we're gonna have to pay them regardless.
We never had to. I mean, you, that should be.
That's because we don't have one.
They, so they gonna pick them people up for free if we pay them?
No.
Huh?
No.
No?
But you're not gonna have a contract ambulance service.
Citizens are gonna pay them too.
You're not gonna have a contract ambulance service that doesn't have a subsidy coming from the county. That's just not gonna happen.
That's, that's the point of negotiating, so.
Right, so Commissioner, basically, you're, you're gonna, we're gonna just, we're gonna authorize chairman to take a package and start the negotiations with private company, right?
Correct, yes. That's what I'll be asking for.
And no decision will be made until it come back to this commission.
Correct.
To vote on.
And be sure we got money in the budget to do it, because it is not gonna be cheap.
Oh, trust me.
Now, finding a, finding a funding source is gonna be a priority. It's, it's not, and just.
Don't get the court ahead of the horse first.
Well, I understand, but.
There's some stuff working, so let's just, let's get this negotiating done and go to step two.
Right, well, that's what I want people to understand. We didn't just send an RFP out and then just sit around. So there's been some discussions on how we're gonna fund it, what kind of route we may take and all that. This is not a, between Commissioner Billingsley and the chairman and myself and others, this is not something that's just done one step at a time. So I just want everybody to know that it is a work in progress, that there's a lot of moving parts to it.
Yeah, this work in progress has been ever since we were sworn in and started that day.
Right.
It's just taken this long for something of this magnitude.
Well, what, I think the biggest thing people need to know is we're trying not to do anything without a plan. One of my Sylvia's favorite words, and one of mine too. You know, we've been working a plan since the swearing in, and that's the honest truth. And nothing was put out, because we didn't want any false hope anywhere about an ambulance service, because everybody's been scrambling for an ambulance service for years. So we put the word out, we sent out the RFPs, but anything back, so now we're gonna go do Plan B and negotiate and come back and see if we can make it work that way. The funding mechanism has already been discussed, and no guarantee we've got it in place yet, but, you know, it's a lot closer than it was four years ago.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
So, yeah, so your final statement to the general public is, is a work in progress deal.
Exactly.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, anything else, Commissioner Billingsley? All right, Commissioner Bone?
No, sir.
Commissioner Childress?
I'm gonna forego the animal control update. I may do one tomorrow night. Just wanted to point out that was recently appointed to the United Way, and there's an opportunity for Chilton County to distribute twenty-five thousand dollars in up to twenty-five hundred dollars per grant. And this, I think, is on our website and on our social media pages, I think. I'm looking for confirmation. If not, we'll have a link out there. Otherwise, I know that the chamber will have it available. You can go to United Way, and it should be there. If there's an organization out there that's looking for a little bit of funding, up to twenty-five hundred dollars, I encourage you to follow the link and fill out the, fill out the information and get it in. The deadline's June twenty-seven. So we, we can fund up to ten organizations with twenty-five hundred dollars each, and we'd love to make sure that we use all of that twenty-five thousand dollars, okay?
Alan, make sure you say United Way, Central Alabama.
United Way, Central Alabama. Ms. Fox, would you like to say anything else about that? Alanda Fox has led the effort down here, United Way, for a long time. She knows more about it than I'll ever know.
I mean, we, what you just said, you can apply for it, and depending on what your requirements are, like you said, twenty-five hundred is the most that you can get. You make, like, there's an organization in Maplesville, we give them five hundred dollars normally to fill a place. Anyway, there's different amounts that the committee, now that you're on the committee, that we can come and buy your application, how much money you're awarded. We do try to keep in reserve two to three thousand dollars for anything that might come up through the year, so we do try to do something, you know, that, in case something comes up like COVID and I that. It's a, but it's a worthwhile, since we, we, Chilton County, United Way, transitioned to United Way, Central Alabama. We did this already. They thought it was a great idea, so now it's done in six counties, so.
Thank you. And I'll add this, you know, a few hundred dollars may not sound like a lot. Twenty-five hundred dollars may not sound like a lot, but it can mean a lot to a certain organization. So I encourage you, if you have an interest, to seek out the information and fill it out.
And it looks like this deadline's about three weeks away.
That's correct.
Less than three weeks.
I can make one more statement, Alan.
Yes, ma'am.
This does not include our large, like, emergency assistance. We give them fifty thousand dollars a year. Butterfly Bridge, they get large. There's, those organizations get very large amounts. What Alan's talking about, this is just a reserve for. What Alan's talking about, this is just a reserve for organizations that are not that degree. But, you know, we, United Way, Central Alabama, and this year, they, we collected fifty, uh, thirty-seven million dollars. There's six counties that, but a lot of the places, like I said, those organizations, and we have a lot more, that get large amounts. But this is just a subsidy of what we get. So, please support United Way, Central Alabama. Because they, I think last year we ended up coming back to Chilton County with over a million dollars.
Okay.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Headley?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, I, in your package here, I handed out prior to the, the meeting, you'll find a Chilton County, Alabama Parks and Recs General Information, Rules and Operating Procedures Handbook. This would be, this will include, I'm gonna read one statement and then give you a brief overview, and that's all I'm gonna, unless you want me to read the thirteen pages.
No.
All right. This guide is gonna be intended to be a basic overview of general information, rules, and operating procedures for the Parks and Recs Department of Chilton County, Alabama. The guide is gonna be adopted by the commission and at times may require supplemental additions or deletions. This guide is not intended to be a comprehensive guide to day-by-day operations that are scheduled or directed by the park director or park manager or staff. Basically, what you'll find is a overview of Higgins Ferry Park and the general, um, uh, pricing and operation guidelines as far as the rules of that park. And then also you'll find in Manuka, you have our pricing, the rules, the hours, all this. Also in, in this, um, we had passed the resolution about, uh, operating a, a general store. So, included in these, uh, operation guideline will be the general store operations. Should be a guide to open and closing procedures there and then cash handling procedures, um, at the general, at the general store. So, what I will be doing, uh, is asking for a resolution to adopt this as our official, um, Rules and Operations Guide. Once that is, uh, possibly passed, it will be then updated on Rover Pass and the, and the, and the webpage and so forth and so on. So, all the rules are uniform and they all match and everything. So, so that's what, um, that's what I got for that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
In, in this, it's in, in this that we have to purchase him two iPads. One for the store and one for, keep on his person, so he can keep up with the reservations at, at both parks.
That is a good idea.
Well, that's, it's technically on the next thing I have.
We're gonna, is this gonna be under consent agenda?
There's not, none of this will be under consent. Uh, um, it's just, to me, it's not general, everyday, um, business. So, uh, we'll just call for a vote for it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the times? So, eight PM to eleven PM, you can still come in or?
Yeah. So, well, it's just like a, like a hotel. Here's, when you, when you read your times, you operate in times of the parks, eight to eights, man, gate is eight to eight.
He's gone.
And they're, and they're going, um, store operate, uh, Thursday through Sunday, nine to five. Um, but your campground quiet time, quiet time's kinda like, treated like a hotel pool. From eleven PM to six AM is considered quiet time inside the campground. And that's just a generalized thing. You go to the, you go to the hotel, hotels are all still open, but you have a quiet time at the pool that you can't be in.
So, eight to eleven, they'll be clearing out more or less?
Yeah, yeah.
Is the, the money for laptops or whatever stuff, we're gonna need to do any of this stuff, is coming out of the budget that's already there?
No, it's gonna be in my next thing. It's gonna be in the next thing that I go over and I'll explain where that comes from.
I have a question.
Sure.
Higgins Ferry, on the pavilion, that hundred bucks, is that for all days?
Today.
I'm thinking, that, uh, that I'm thinking that that's cheap for all days, is what I'm thinking.
Well, well, it, it is. Mr. Giles is our park, um, director. How, how long has it been, that hundred dollars a day?
As long as I remember, since ninety-one, when I started going. But, and, most times they're not there all day.
Yeah.
And you got church service on Sunday from eight-thirty to nine, which is just a thirty-minute short thing. They can't come in after nine, about nine-thirty, ten on Sunday. But usually if somebody comes in, it's getting close to lunch, and they're usually out there for five, six, twelve, if they're there, that's like most of the birthday parties or something like this.
Yeah, I know how this.
Yeah, that's, it'll at least be two fifty to three hundred dollars. Hundred dollars from the nineties, man, things is triple.
Well, I mean, Commissioner Headley, here, here's my thing, is it, it's a public, it's, it's a county park, but it's a public park. Public boat ramp owned by Alabama Power, and then we operate the facility. At a, at a hundred dollars, uh, the room in Manuka is a hundred and fifty, or twenty-five dollars an hour. I think if you put it at two fifty, you know, we're not a venue. So, you know, I mean, I just feel like, I mean, we have a playground down there that is extremely well-kept, extremely nice. If you haven't visited our park system, you need to, right? But, um, I just feel like with us not being a, a venue, it's, it's a little bit different. If, if we, uh, if we wanna build a multi-use center down there on twenty-two, let it overlook the lake and, you know, build a venue, it would, it would probably suffice to be three hundred, you know, three hundred dollars a day. I, I think we're gonna lose.
There wouldn't be no more close to price of venue.
I mean.
Two fifty is more or less a pavilion price, not a venue price. If you was trying to price it like a venue, you'd be pricing it thirty-five hundred a day or twenty-five hundred.
Well, I, I know that, but.
I'm agreeing with Commissioner, um, Perkins. The hundred dollars is basically just to cover any expense. And I think it's to encourage people to actually use it. And that's, that's why I would, I'd be in favor of just leaving it where it is, you know?
Yeah, and that's, that's fine if y'all wanna do that, but, you know, just talking about the place where you stay, you talking about staying down there. What, one or two people, you talking about fifty or seventy-five, or maybe a hundred people at a pavilion. So, you ain't talking like one or two. But, hey, how up y'all wanna handle it?
Well, I think, I think.
Oh, it's good to have discussion on this back and forth.
Yeah, Mr. Giles, on the, on the pavilion at Higgins Ferry, and typically it's rented by whom? Yeah. Typically, it's rented by who? Birthday parties or, I mean, we're, we're not.
Once in a while you have family reunions, about three a year. We have about three family reunions a year that books them every year. But most of the birthday parties and stuff like that, normally you got a couple, three hours and they go and book them down.
Yeah.
And you gotta consider enough, y'all, whatever y'all go with at times, but you gotta consider, we, you do have lights there, but they usually there dark, run the lights until you got no air conditioner or nothing, it's just open, open.
Okay.
Which is nice, I'm not saying that, but, I mean, you know, we're not putting out a lot of money on.
Yeah, I, I just think if, if we get way too, I'm, I'm all about making some money, but if we get too pricey, I think we'll price ourselves out of business on it, and we, we lose some of the benefit for the people coming down there.
What happens on the little fishing tournaments that are held down there? I know I've been in.
Yeah, we have a lot of tournaments that rent that building. They have one for weigh-in.
Right.
They come in and weigh-in, and they rent, we've got a weigh-in station that's there by fireco. We can't rent it, but they usually, the big ones rent a pavilion. And they may use the pavilion, they may just have a trailer they park there and the pavilion, but, uh, they pay a hundred dollars a day.
So, they pay also, yeah.
And they come in early in the morning, most of them, or use it the late evening when it's weigh-in, they, that's where they gather up at. Some of them may have some cager there, most of them don't, but.
Have you checked any other prices, stuff like this in other places, like other parks, what they're getting in pavilions and parks? Like water, some of that, just, you know, because they, it could be too high instead of not enough. You never know. If you ain't checked.
You check them. Do you ever check?
No, but I just had to stand up for this a little bit. Like, whenever it was raised from fifty to a hundred, there's a lot of people in Chilton County that were unable to come and have kids' birthday parties. Because, you know, we're, everybody can't afford that. And, and, you know, now it's a hundred, and we still have birthday parties going, but, you know, I know y'all are a money-making business, but you still gotta have something for the community that they can afford. So, and they clean up after, yeah, and they clean up after themselves. There's, there's really nobody there, like, the whole entire day.
Anybody else got any comments or questions concerning the rules? All right.
All right. Thank y'all. The next thing is, um, I'm gonna ask for a resolution to build out and provide initial inventory for the Manuka General Store at an approximate cost of fifteen thousand dollars to be paid out of the SICA revenue, uh, fund. Or I guess source, would that not be more accurate?
I don't think so. That was for equipment, wasn't it? What it, was it? Was it just parks?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, wanna make sure.
We spend at the parks.
Yeah, thank God, Jake.
We never.
So, so, here, so this would include the build-out, be the wall, the wall units, uh, shelving, things like that for the inventory to go on, and then the inventory. We've got the groundwork, you know, like I said, laid out for, uh, our vendors, uh, that's, that would be providing it, providing that, and then getting that put into the, uh, the POS system off of, uh, Square. It would include our equipment, like, uh, iPads that Commissioner Bone was mentioning. And then, um, uh, and then basically the inventory. The, the reason I wanted to make it, it's not on consent, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, some people are familiar, that, or may not be familiar with that, that particular revenue source, um, was way back when, it's been a minute now, that, uh, Commissioner Williams had, had, uh, talked to this, this company, and the company needed a rental yard. And we had passed the resolution that the rental monies from this company would be, um, put into this revenue source for use at the parks. So, one of the best things about this is we were able to purchase out of this. So far, we were able to change, we were able to change our garbage pickup situation. So, by buying our own, uh, dump trailer and hauling it off ourselves, we saved, uh, roughly eight thousand dollars a year of taxpayer money using non-taxpayer money, um, which will help further that, uh, getting us into the, uh, into the black for the year. So, the, that particular, uh, item, uh, different equipment, and then the inventory and this build-out will all come out of that revenue source. So, we've been able to use monies that were from rentals, uh, coming into the county to then turn it back and put it into something that, that the county, uh, the citizens are gonna be able to enjoy and, uh, get a benefit out of and generate some tax revenue using non-tax revenue money. So, that's where this, that's where this would come from. And, uh, I put in approximate cost because it's estimated. So, I'll be asking for that for tomorrow also.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, uh.
That's all.
The Williams-Jensen contract, uh, I didn't see it in the package.
I didn't see it either, but it was, uh, mailed out.
Everybody, each one of you should have gotten a copy of the proposed contract from Williams and Jensen. The cost is seven to two thousand a year. And then, they will be working on, by Chilton County. Huh?
Lobbyist?
Yeah, yeah. This is for, uh, the lobbyist firm. And they'll be working on the project at the two-hundred exit as well as extending the water on beyond Verbena toward the river, where people are just like the ones in the Maplesville area who do not have fit drinking water. That's part of the ask that I have given, uh, them. And part of the ask that I've been working with Chilton Water for a figure, and we've got a plan. We have a plan. So, now if we get to funding, we can put this plan in place. And hopefully then I can sense the sale of that two-hundred property, and we can put that money to use somewhere else. It's, uh, twelve thousand, no, say, six thousand a month, seventy-two thousand for the year.
And what are we getting to that?
Well, I'm hoping we're gonna get the, there's no guarantee.
But we guaranteeing we're gonna spend that a year.
We're guaranteeing, we're guaranteeing, we're at, unless, if we, we've got a thirty-day clause, we can get out of it. We can, we can stop it at any time. We'll owe them the thirty days and that's it. And they've had results everywhere they've been, people I've talked to. So, I'm hoping, and according to them, this ten to twelve million dollar ask for water is a drop in the bucket. Their asks are more like seventy and eighty million dollars that they're going after. So, hopefully, this will be a drop in the bucket. We can get that drop and put it to work in Chilton County. And I'll be asking for a resolution tomorrow night to enter into this contract.
Is that, is that a yearly contract? I mean, I know we got a thirty-day out, but I mean, we.
It's an annual.
It's an annual contract.
With opportunity for renewal. And six thousand also covers all of his travel back and forth to DC. The only thing it wouldn't, wouldn't cover would be, um, if there's, uh, some activity where there should be a meeting, uh, that's, uh, between parties, that's not covered. You know, there may be expenses that we would need to pick up for something like that. But otherwise, it's as, uh, usual customary travel back and forth as he, as they do the lobbying.
And if I understand it, he will approach the chairman administrator about this prior to obligating any, any monies for a, a dinner meeting or whatever he's doing. Uh, and also, this is for DC lobbying, not in Alabama. This is, this is doing it in Wa, in Washington. So, uh, hopefully this is gonna pan out. I got, I'm confident it's going to.
But it's not guaranteed.
No, no, it's not a guarantee, but I've got all the confidence in the world this is going to pan out.
No, so, so he does, he's the same one, is the same one that City of Clayton uses?
City of Clayton?
Yeah, 'cause I was, I was under, I thought it was, I thought it was the State House and DC, but so it's only a DC lobbyist?
It's only DC. We can go to Montgomery.
Well, you know, I'm kinda like you are for, I kinda have reservations about lobbyists, but I have seen where they can be beneficial.
Well, the thing with the lobbyist is, and that, you know, I've been told I'm hard-headed. And I ain't bought that story yet, but for two years, I never got an opportunity to make it to Washington. He's there every day, every other day, seeing these people, talking to these people. And it's just like the days I spent in Montgomery. The more times you in their face, the more apt you are to get what you want, such as the logging bill. We were in their face down there for weeks, and it got defeated. Same thing happens in Washington, but you gotta be in their face. I can't be, none of us here can be. So, we pay somebody to do it for us. If it works, great. If it don't, then we'll punt. Okay, uh, anything else on that? Okay, uh, Commissioner Hall has set up a town hall for us at Mapleville Library on June seventeenth. That's next Tuesday, from six to eight. Anybody who can make it? We had a pretty good discussion at our last one, so that'll be a roundtable for that. Oh, yeah. Anybody got any questions on that?
Is it on the page? Yeah, it'll be, it will be put on the page, won't it?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so I can share it.
Yeah. Uh, and I called, uh, talked to County Board of Central Access today. They just gotten back in town, so they don't have an update for us, but she said they would try to have one at our next meeting. Only contribution, so we can get an idea of where we stand with our million-dollar pledge to them. Uh, and I have a proclamation. Anybody know what this month is in Chilton County, Alabama? Well, does anybody know what we're famous for in Chilton County? If you don't, I'm fixing to tell you. Peaches. Judge Calhoun, uh, representing the Lions Club, asked me if I would, uh, consider a proclamation, and I said, I'm sure. The commission would be glad to. I'm gonna read this proclamation, and tomorrow night I will read it into the minutes. Uh, by the Chilton County Commission, proclamation declaring the month of June as quote-unquote Peach Month in Chilton County, Alabama. Whereas Chilton County, Alabama is recognized across the state and beyond for its rich agricultural heritage, and is especially renowned for producing the finest peaches in the southeast. And whereas generations of farmers in Chilton County have cultivated peaches with care, dedication, and pride, contributing significantly to the county's economy, culture, and community identity. And whereas the peach harvest each June marks a time of celebration, community events, and family traditions culminating in the annual Chilton County Peach Festival, which draws visitors from near and far. And whereas it is fitting and proper to honor the vital role that peaches and peach growers play in sustaining the local economy and preserving the agricultural legacy of Chilton County. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Chilton County Commission, together with the Clayton Lions Club, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Peach Month in Chilton County, Alabama, and encourage all residents and visitors to recognize and celebrate the importance of our peach industry, support our local farmers, and enjoy the sweet bounty of the season. And I think that is excellent there, Judge. Any comments?
No, Judge, you have any comments?
Uh, well, the, uh, as far as the Lions Club is concerned, uh, considered weak, we just appreciate y'all putting we present that to the county commission, uh, to vote on, and, uh, it's another avenue and opportunity to, uh, come vote our town to it.
I, I would like to say one thing about the, uh, the previous, I don't have my glasses, I'm sorry, that Williams.
Williams and Jensen.
Jensen contract. Um, the Alabama Pro Back Judges Association, uh, has a similar representation down in Montgomery. We pay the same amount that you guys would be paying, and, uh, it's very beneficial for us. So when, when you, I was thinking that it was gonna be Montgomery, but when you said Washington, DC, just for comparison reasons, I, I think that's a pretty good price.
Well, I didn't realize that, that's a bargain at that price then. Thank you for that, too. Okay, any questions about the proclamation? Uh, okay, Thompson tractor invoices, of course, will be tomorrow night. All right, all minds are satisfied, we'll adjourn this work session, see you tomorrow night at six-thirty for our regular meeting.